Bring the meeting to order.
I was Edward F. T.
Okay, short agenda tonight, but actually some meat when we get to our work session. Mostly we're meeting obviously this evening for a work session. But the first item that we have this evening is a request for an extension and a resolution amendment. Ninety-one Bedford Road LLC, the application for the site development plan, wetland permits, tree removal permits, stormwater pollution prevention plan, ninety-one Bedford Road, New York Route one seventeen. So.
Do we need a motion to open the meeting?
I don't think so. Okay.
Do you ever do a motion? Yeah.
But he always asks me not.
Not only, just not every time.
He's not sitting in the right order.
Wait for the one day you say yeah.
How can we remember? It's one of these things we choose not to.
Anyway, here we are. So we have, perhaps. Steven, you can just lead us through.
Sure. So the extension is a time extension to the signing of the site plan. The applicants are working diligently to try and address all of the conditions prior to signing so that so their request is a normal request in accordance with code. As far as the change in conditions, Bob and I sat with the applicant. We reviewed their resolution of approval. There were conditions in there that we felt as staff could be moved to either before applying for a building permit or before applying for a certificate of occupancy. There in total, there are six conditions. I made a mistake and I meant there was initial ten. But there's only six that Bob and I felt could be moved comfortably. You know, we still would have the ability to say no if we needed to in the sense that it is something that we felt there was no reason why we couldn't delay it, but would help them get to the finish line more readily than not. Bob, do you want to add anything?
No, like I said, we sat down with JJ and we feel comfortable with the ones they want. I mean, keep in mind, they're not going to give the BP either way. They just wanted to shift them from the site to the BP. I guess that felt they afforded them more time. I'm not quite sure how, but we had no jokes into it nonetheless.
How does it work in terms of the timeframes that we have in here? So with the ten year wetland monitoring and maintenance plan, will that run from the time that they issue it to the CO now?
Yes.
Yes, those are geared towards.
So it goes from that time?
Yes.
As opposed to now?
Correct.
So it's actually makes it longer in terms of the monitoring.
That's right. Generally, you don't start those until they get their CO. That's when Steven allows the clock ticking for the ten years or five years depending on what the community wants.
Yep, yep. And then number twenty, wouldn't it be better that we had the estimate sooner than later in terms of what these cost estimates are for the planting plan? I just don't quite understand why they would take a long period of time for that. A longer period of time. I mean, I don't think it's a problem either way, but it just seems like we would want to get that sooner than later.
We would always like everything sooner than later. But you know, we can't control what an company does and how they hire their professionals and for what timeframe they hire their professionals. So that was something that Bob and I felt it didn't.
It was okay either way.
Yeah, it was okay either way. Yeah, it's not, you know, it's not a construction estimate that Bob needs now in order to make sure the bonds are correct when they pull the bonds, so.
Stephen has ample time to review it prior to your.
Much more work to go.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions, anyone, board members?
Is the sixty days okay or you guys could be back for another thirty or sixty?
If they do, then they can come back and answer.
Yeah, at sixty days, they can come back if they're still trying.
Okay, good. All right, is there any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the application for the extension?
I have a question about the resolution on page two, the top two lines. For adopting this now plan.
Resolution approval and it's moving and meeting on the twentieth.
Also, line seven through ten, we could probably strike, which says the plan board carefully consider comments with regards to proposed amendments raised by the public or other interested organizations. There were no comments by the public.
That's fine, so you want that regarding the amendment?
So just take out the whole.
Does that whereas clause, the six whereas? Six through eight.
On page two.
On page two.
Sheila, what's your comment initially?
Lines one and two on page two, the date of adoption would be February twentieth as opposed to the March sixth.
Yep, okay. Anyone else anything? If not, is there a motion to adopt the amendment to the resolution and the extension?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. All right, great. Okay.
I was going to leave, I don't think you need to do this. Okay, with Sabrina.
You're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to go visit your family for once or something.
Have a nice night, Bob.
You'd like to use your car.
No, you temporarily misplaced them.
That sounds much nicer.
You're going to speak your book with you?
I'll speak.
I'll leave it here.
We'll be thinking of you that way.
Thank you guys. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. So for those of you, Tom, I don't think you were here when I was making introductions earlier. This is Kellen Cantrell. He's the assistant, my new assistant planner. He's been with us for quite a bit of time. This is the first time he's before you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Yeah, so you're a guest.
Probably not failed here.
I've let him out. So I don't know if you want, how you want to start, Bob? Do you want us to give you kind of a presentation?
Yeah, I think we could do that. Obviously, what we're doing here is, you know, it's our work session on the presentation and the discussion regarding transition zones. So it's something that we identified that was something that was in the comp plan. We think it's important. We've heard about it in connection with ninety-one Bedford, for example. I've heard about it from other developers in town who are concerned with how to do things and making sure that they don't run afoul of rules and concerned with it. And of course, we've heard from neighbors who are, who live next to these areas and we've heard all kinds of concerns. So in ninety-one Bedford, I think we walked through those pretty well, dealt with those pretty well. But it seems to me that we were, at least from my perspective, we were doing a little bit too much of an ad lib and perhaps it would be better to try to codify some of these concerns and to send this over to the town board for some suggestions for legislative relief and change. So my position is that, my feeling on transition zones is that the residential areas that are immediately abutting, the business areas, I just feel that they're somewhat vulnerable to this development. We want to see this development, but at the same token, these folks have been here. They have their rights and I think, you know, our current code certainly addresses a number of those issues. It addresses, you know, types of uses, intensity, location of exterior lighting, storage of refuse, loading and unloading of trucks, location of signs and similar factors, whatever that means. It's kind of a catchall. I'm not sure it is a catchall, but it's certainly meant to be a little bit broad then. So with that being said, I guess I know you guys have done, put together a presentation for us and then will help us with the discussion.
So we thought we'd all give you a kind of a foundation, in essence, of what we're talking about and where we're talking about it. I'm going to turn it over to Kellen, who's going to run you through some slides. It's short and sweet, just to kind of get you.
Great. I'm just going to sit down if it's pretty.
Yeah, sure.
So.
That's okay.
All right. So first off, we'll start with some typical transition zone characteristics. I hate reading off the slide, but I'm going to. Step down in zoning from more intensive to less intensive uses. Incompatible uses abutting one another, residential to commercial and/or industrial. Creating a buffer between those incompatible uses. There could be vegetative landscaping requirements to buffer between residential and non-residential. Typical transition zoning characteristic is an intention to preserve residential character of the area as well as utilize higher residential multifamily or mixed use zoning in that transition area as a transition area. And then having specific guidelines to minimize, design guidelines, to minimize visual disturbance of the transition area.
Now, these seven characteristics, Kellen had done some research of not only our community, but surrounding communities in our neck of the woods. So these were typically the characteristics that we found in our area of the world.
And with that, these are the municipalities that are connected to some of those typical transition zone characteristics that are within our area, as Sabrina said. And Newcastle only represents two of the seven. Somers, it doesn't necessarily have transition zoning by name, but offers buffers between residential and non-residential uses. Yorktown has transition zoning. North Castle doesn't necessarily have it by name, but they have a nursery business district, which is pretty much the equivalent of transition zoning from non, from commercial, specific commercial uses to non-commercial uses residential. And then Lewisboro, they have a residential district that abuts a commercial district and that applies to any residential district. So these are the typical, these are the municipalities that have these typical characteristics.
So when you have, sorry, Sir, when you put the numbers next to each of those communities, do you mean that they have all those, certain aspects are codified in those municipalities for the, so they've taken those transitions on characteristics into consideration?
And while we're here.
Well, what I was going to say, transition zoning can be, it's put into the code in two ways. It's either its own zoning classification called a transition zone, much like an overlay zone or an environmental buffer zone, or it's characteristics that are worked into each zoning section when dealing with incompatible or different uses on neighboring properties.
I have a question on seven. Do any of the other communities that you scoured for information, do they have any guidelines relative to what Bob said, lighting, spillage, noise from the non-residential section, you know, early in the morning because they're delivering, you know, tons of this and that? Is there any of that that you came up with or is that going to be something that we need to talk about later?
When you're relating this to number seven with the design guidelines? So I think it pertains to uses, whenever you want to talk about uses, what uses. So the nursery business district that, let's see, which one? So the North Castle Nursery Business District, it only allows nurseries, so plant nurseries. So and then there, there's a very short list, I think Real Estate Offices is one. So their, their non-disruptive uses, you know, it's not a lumberyard. It's not, you know, a coffee shop that's going to be open at, you know, six or five AM. And with that, I can send you the examples and within each code that I have and the wording from those codes. I can definitely email those to you if you want to look at the exact wording of it to get a better sense.
About sure you do.
Yeah, but I think, I think things that you're looking.
It's less than four hundred pages.
The things that you're noting as far as lighting and refuse, those are all things that are worked into different sections of the code, not necessarily under transition zoning. It's a matter of whether or not you think that the general statement in zoning regarding hours of refuse or even hours of construction needs to be more specific when you're dealing about specific areas in the community. And I want Kellen to move on because we did do some mapping of where we have this big change in uses in Newcastle. So you can really hone your discussion into these areas and not necessarily the larger residential areas.
Can I, I'm sorry, just one more question on that last line? The north, no, I'm sorry.
This one?
Yeah. The North Castle Nursery Business, that it, that's a, that's a business district zone which was put in place for that specific use, which just as a consequence can work as a buffer between a more intensive use and a residential use. It wasn't, I'm sorry, it wasn't actually crafted to be a transition zone, was it?
Well, the language in it either mentions transition from this, from a less intensive to a more intensive or a more intensive to less intensive. They, these specifically mention the transition from one use to another, being residential to commercial or industrial. They're not just say like, I didn't just throw in, okay, this, this is kind of a buffer zone because it's between these two. These specifically mention being a buffer between more intensive and less intensive uses.
So is it like a floating zone?
No, it's not a floating.
So it's actually loca, there are actually specific locations within.
Specific locations.
So was it, because I think I know the business that it applies to. Was it created for that specifically? To go into that specifically?
Yes, I can't, I can't speak to that. I didn't create this.
Yeah.
That would be my suspicion.
Because, because, and that actually might be an interesting case too because I think there've been a lot of changes that have been sought for that zone, which I don't think have been well received, if I recall correctly from what I read in the paper, the changes that have been requested by the owner in that zone had, they've, they've looked for, for a number of changes over the years, which I don't think they've received.
Because of the residential butters.
I'm going to lean on Jen here, guys.
What they requested and the noise factors, the traffic factors that it might.
I don't think you, there's a fine line to be creating zoning for a particular use or a particular property. So I would assume that their zone, this zoning was something that they felt was valuable wherever they're placing it in their community, you know, without looking at their zoning map and where they're applying it. I don't think we can answer, well, you know, that how or why it was created. I think we can do some investigation if you want us to as to how or why it was created.
Well, I just wanted to know whether this created as, I'm sorry, created as a transition zone or not. It sounds like it really wasn't. It sounds like it's a specific use that one could then back into it to say, oh, hey, this also functions as a transition zone. So let's apply some further specifics to that zone in order to make sure it continues to function that way.
Yep.
That's what I'm guessing.
Yeah, and I would guess the same thing.
A reasonable guess.
Yes.
Does that change it from a hypothesis or?
I was just thinking that myself.
Yeah, I mean, there's a difference between the intent of the zone and the actual carryout of the zone. So that's, yeah. So obviously, this connects to the twenty seventeen Newcastle Comprehensive Plan. Chapter one, two, locate higher density residential developments in the hamlets with density of development decreasing as distance from hamlet center increases. Chapter one, goal fourteen, promote development in areas with existing infrastructure over areas with limited or no infrastructure services. Chapter two, goal twenty-seven, create vibrant and walkable mixed use areas in the hamlets that are well connected to public transit. So now we're going to get into some mapping to show you exactly where these transition zones are. And they're really just in the three places here, Chapua Crossing, Millwood Hamlet and Chapua Hamlet. So here's an overview of the maps and then we'll run through each one individually. So Chapua Hamlet, there's the hamlet boundary right here in the dash.
Do you need to point to?
It doesn't really work on the screen.
Yeah, I'll point it for you. Here's the boundary.
Yeah, so you can kind of see it.
Yeah.
It doesn't really work as much, but.
I thought these were supposed to work in here. Can we change the color on them?
That's what we were told, to get green.
Maybe you should do this for that.
A little bit.
That's how it works. That's good.
All right, so here.
Yep, so this is the boundary of the, the hamlet boundary of Chapua.
The dotted line is the boundary, the colors overlay is the zoning.
What's the basis for the boundary?
It's what we have defined.
Well, this is, this is actually a census designated place. This is a CDP from the federal government.
The, the dash line?
Yes. And the CDP was used in the comprehensive plan and all of the analysis that was associated with it. We run into more of a definitive boundary issue when we talk about Millwood. This one's pretty sad.
Get my bearings.
Sure.
Is this, is this zone right here? Well, if I look at that up on the ceiling, I believe. Is it, but is this, is this the Sawmill Park where the train track?
That is the Sawmill Park.
And the railroad, yeah.
And so this is, this is the bus company and.
Yes.
That's an industrial zone.
Yeah, but that is, it's, yes, IG, general industrial.
So IG is industrial. All the yellow, so in planning, yellow is obviously represents residential.
Is this, is this train station here?
Yes.
Yep. So that's commercial is the red.
The IP in the bottom is the town hall property.
Yep. And then the industrial is the purple.
So the parking lot is BR?
Yes.
And I didn't realize that there was a little piece of industrial up on North Greeley.
That must be the post office.
Is that the post office?
Yeah, it goes beyond the post office, the property, the.
Now Verizon's much closer in, I think.
That's right in the middle.
Yeah, that, that's be, it goes a little bit beyond the post, like across the post. It's vacant right now. It's known as the El Cam property. There used to be a French restaurant there.
Right, I remember that. But it had been industrial at some point?
This is the zoning, the zoning hasn't changed.
Current zoning, it's right now.
Well, yeah, that's beyond the post office.
The other side is true.
And there's even a manufacturing zone too. I didn't know we had that.
That's the multifamily.
Multifamily.
Oh, that's, that's multifamily manufacturing.
Yeah.
Multifamily.
That's why I didn't know we had an manufacturing zone.
On my screen, it looks much better because the, I know the picture for inch on this screen is not very good. In my defense.
Okay, moving on.
And that, the zone, this zone right here.
Which one? This one right here?
Right in there.
Yep.
Who's that? Is that the condominium?
That's the multi, yeah, so it's a multifamily Chapua.
Multi, multi.
So where the.
And we have the same behind the old grand hearing.
Yep.
Okay.
So where over here, someplace over here where, oh, by the way, we should rename Chapua Station because there's already a Chapua Station now with the restaurant. But where the, where the affordable housing is going in, has that not been rezoned as a separate area someplace around here?
It's right in, it'd be down here somewhere because this is the train station.
Yeah, that, that, yeah.
It's right in here.
It's still IG.
Because it's on the other side of the tracks.
Yeah, it's the bottom.
It's the bottom portion near the.
It's all in that purple.
Still in the IG.
It's on, it's on the east side of the Sawmill, right?
Yeah.
No, it's on the west side.
No, west side.
It's on the west side of the Sawmill.
Yeah, it's, it's on the other side of the tracks. It's on the same side as.
But east of the Sawmill.
But it's over the bridge though.
So, so, yeah, it's right here, guys, it's right here.
Good question.
Where we have an east of the place.
It's in this area right here.
Yeah, right.
It's over under the bridge.
Right, that's it.
It's.
But you have to go over the bridge to get to it.
Yes, you do.
But has that been rezoned or is it still like? No, they, they permitted, sorry, they permitted the affordable housing in the IG zone.
No, it's. Yep, go ahead. Yes, that's the workforce housing code that allows it.
Allows, right.
It allows it in the industrial zone.
In any zone, I think. Yeah, go ahead.
It's specifically originated in the industrial zone.
Okay, very good.
All right, moving on.
All right, next, so this is the Millwood Hamlet. The dash line is the hamlet boundary.
So where's the ball field? Is that the orange, the baseball fields?
Yeah, that's one place where it could be.
Yeah, here's the, this is the shopping center.
Yeah, okay, see the road, gotcha, gotcha.
The wrong inside there.
This is Millwood Lumber over here.
I'm going to confuse everybody.
Three things up there, sorry.
Somebody take away.
A bunch of dead eyes. Is the dark purple where the basketball place is and that truck area?
Uh, no, the dark purple is Mavis.
Is Mavis, aha, okay, oh, so then, okay.
The basketball is the IG. It spreads across.
Across the street.
Right here.
Gotcha.
Right here.
And then the fire department's in the MFPD?
This is, yes, this is the fires department.
So what is that dark purple, what is that zone?
That's IP.
Industrial.
Planned industrial.
That's Mavis.
As opposed to general industrial.
Ah, okay.
And that's what the fuchsia is, general?
Yes.
Where, you know, the crane companies.
Crane guy is.
Yes, the crane guy, there was the school that was in there.
Right, there's.
Which closed, right?
There's a, there's a, there's a stone fabricating shop in there.
That's up on the hill, right?
Yeah.
Lardo's got something over there also, I believe.
Yeah.
Because we're shulman or shulman.
Shulman on the road after.
Shulman, yes, that's what that is, right in here.
Right.
There's, there's several different.
Is that tile company or something or tile?
Yes, there's, there's, this is Schuman Road right here in the middle.
They do their stone work there.
And then there's properties on either side.
Right.
Now, this is a, this is a CPD also, right?
This is not a CDP. This is a combination of different boundaries. We had to come up with a, there were different, the CDP changed in this area between the early two thousands and like twenty-ten. So this dotted line represents the compilation of the boundary as we were able to relate it to a known census boundary when we were doing the comprehensive plan update.
And how many families live in that area? Eight, ten?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Is this something that would make some sense to relook at and bring in some of these other zones within this and expand the dotted lines on the hamlet itself?
So when we talked about the hamlet in the comprehensive plan, we looked at where the existing commercial like uses were. We did it based on uses where there were, you know, there's some single family homes along here in this area, there's single family homes up in this area. We've had discussions as we were doing the comprehensive plan about upgrading the zoning in this area to do more mixed use, residential, commercial, restaurant. A lot of the changes would be dictated by available infrastructure. And the town board commissioned a sewer feasibility analysis, which was recently completed. Without the larger diversion project with the pipeline coming down from Random Farms, the project would cost seventeen million to sewer. It is highly unlikely that would ever happen in Millwood.
Say that, say that one more time.
Seventeen million.
Seventeen million dollars to extend it from North State Road up, one hundred?
To it, yes, yes.
Seventeen million bucks.
Seventeen million.
Soup to nuts, is that hard and soft cost?
Soup to nuts, hard and soft cost. Okay?
What's soft cost? You mean, oh, you mean the engineering?
Engineer.
Yeah, eighty feet.
That's the, that is the guesstimate estimate based on work that was recent.
Guesstimate.
It's a guesstimate. I, I, let's put it this way, it's about.
We would call that an opinion of probable cause.
An opinion of probable cause. If the pipeline is built, the project would cost closer to seven million dollars. And there's a real reality that potentially we could. We looked at what's called an economic development unit. The consultant who was tasked with the, with the analysis looked at economic development units and trying to identify what types of uses would benefit the economic, the number of economic development units. It, there is a reality that it is a possibility if the town wishes to have housing in this area that sewers could be brought in if the Random Farms pipeline goes in.
If it goes in.
If it goes in.
So if, so just playing it out, so if sewers come in, it allows the town to change the zoning, to maybe build more, which gets more people living in hamlet, in the hamlet, which eventually can bring in more residents and more tax bases for the community and stuff like that.
Sure, yes. And also, there's an issue with areas for septic systems. You know, we have restaurants in that area that have problematic septic systems. You know, so there's a lot of reasons to bring in sewers to maintain the existing uses.
Yeah, actually, here's somebody who wanted to bring a restaurant into the firehouse and they can't because you can't.
Correct.
So this is all very interesting. It might be a little bit off topic, but if we want to, if we want to actually discuss the future of the hamlet, potential future of the hamlet tonight, we could do that. So it's pretty much a given that sewers means it's easier to do more bedrooms, more, more residential and more commercial development.
Or everything, more density.
Right, more density. But let's go back to the septic systems and the potential and availability of acceptable areas, land areas that exist now and what the septic capacity might be. And then roll up a development number from that. Has anybody looked at that or are we just, just automatically saying this isn't a good place to do septic? We know enough not to do it, we don't want to do it as a policy matter, therefore, the only option is sewers.
Yeah, I can't answer that.
So you can't answer that.
I can't answer.
There has not been a study.
There had, to my knowledge, there has not been a study about, about septic, future septic areas.
Septic capacity.
Septic capacity. The area itself, we know based on applications we've seen and different people who've come into the office, there's a high water table in this area and poor soils. There's also wet, very wet areas on many of the potential development area properties. Not to say that it's impossible, nobody has done a thorough analysis from a septic standpoint.
Got it, so.
But it's also DEP watershed as well.
Correct.
Most of it is.
So all those are impediments, I'm certain. But if, if it's, if at this point, it's a, it's a go-no-go assumption for development, all tied to sewers, if we really don't know the answer to this question, it seems to me that the folks who would like to see more development in this area, for whatever reason, are not actually getting a fair assessment of what the real capacity would be.
And, and I would agree with you. And, and I think that there is a, what we have heard, there are design guidelines for Millwood and some of the property owners, given their existing uses, have a hard time changing the nature of their property or bringing in new tenants into their property that meet with the guidelines that have been established in the town code. So.
That can be changed.
Correct, well, and so, 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 so these are the things that have come up and to identify what is the future of Millwood, it's a different discussion.
It is a different discussion.
Correct.
But if we're into the discussion, I'd like to point out that maybe in the interest. It is a different discussion. But if we're into the discussion, I'd like to point out that maybe in the interest of all the work that's been done on the comprehensive plan for the hamlets, that in particular, uh the if if sewer capacity or septic capacity is the is the uh the threshold for the amount of development that could actually happen here, then it seems to me that at some point along the way, some sort of assessment should be done on the on that.
Yep.
Yep, I totally agree. I mean, you could if you found wonderful land someplace that was vacant and somebody wanted to sell it and it had just the right characteristics, you could consider a community septic system.
Put a plant. Exactly.
Which have been proposed and some places have actually used them. And I don't know what the success rate is.
Does Random Farms have one?
No, they have an above ground wastewater treatment plant which has wheels and.
That's pretty small.
So there's a community septic system right over here.
Yeah, so does a Pheasant Run have something?
Yes, they have a community septic system.
So and it works?
They have and they they no, they have problems.
They have problems.
Well, yeah, so that's the issue with all of this. And it's if it's septic, unless the conditions are totally perfect, it will eventually fade in its ability to do things.
So I'm just saying that we're talking about this. I'd like to suggest that that ought to be looked at.
Yeah, but my idea is different than yours to a certain extent, I think. Because you're talking if you had really good soil where you could put five houses up, that's different than having a community system for thirty houses.
No, I understand that. And I think that having a community system for thirty houses should be on the table also.
Has is this something that was actually in the comp plan as something to be studied? I can't recall.
Sewer feasibility was in the comprehensive plan. Septic sustainability, if you will, was not.
Yeah, I I agree.
Yeah.
I recall that.
Yeah. But definitely study the sewers.
Well, maybe that could be a branch of it. To Tom's point, that could be something that we would take as a branch. And again, to the extent that we have grounding on this in the comp plan.
Yeah. No, I think it's a very good point.
And you know, and where Tom's suggestion where Tom's suggestion may help, and I guess it's gotta go through town board, the firehouse is a perfect example. I like I know somebody who Chapel Quah resident, they wanted to buy it. They wanted to put in a restaurant and they wanted to do an apartment upstairs and you can't get septic. So that building may stay vacant for a long time because it's really limited. What you I mean, the fire department was lucky that they were there. You might not be able to put that much more there as far as like a restaurant or people living there because that parking lot was so small.
Well, you're talking about one specific site.
I I'm just about one specific site. But I but I'm just thinking play that through. As things in town go dark, if some things go dark or they vacant or somebody wants to flip it, they may have the same problem. Oh, I can't do something with the hoops plus. Let's say that guy goes out of business and moves out and somebody wants to come in. They're limited to something that doesn't really impact more sewer. Yeah, it's got like one toilet, that's it.
Doesn't have a bathroom, doesn't have a bathroom. No, understood. I get but yeah, but that.
So that's where your study may come in or your suggestion for a study. If the town is willing to promote that, it may give us opportunities or not us, others to develop those parts, those.
Right, right, right. Got it.
Or they might just sit for a while.
Got it, right.
Yeah, which would make Millwood even less exciting.
Yeah, well, and and but it's also I I think it's a great point. You know, how much land area would you need for a community septic system? What would it net in a sense of additional development potential? You know, those are all things that should be considered.
And it's definitely I totally agree with everything. And to a certain extent, I think in in our community, that sewage disposal is the only way. Uh you have to totally understand it to make sure that you don't overdevelop accidentally in any one area. And it's sort of like uh you know, look at all the Yonkers stuff and gee, they can do all this stuff because you know what they have? They have one of the largest wastewater treatment plants in the state of New York. So I think it's sixth sixth largest.
Right there.
And yeah, you can just do it. And they've had water use cut down, so they have capa- they can do all that stuff. And but out here in the in the Netherlands, you know, we have to build a pipe to get it there and hook up to other pipes. And if the other pipes get too much capacity coming in, you see what they can do. Then you have to rip those pipes up and do more pipes. And so you have this cascading effect. And sewage, water, we're fine. Electricity, we're fine. Roads and parking are probably some issues depending on what all is created. But sewage is the is the key factor.
It's the governor.
For any of the stuff.
Well, not only that is I think is we talked about this. If you graph it, our existing sewage disposal stock, over time, the capacity is going to diminish because these septic tanks just don't work.
Well.
So if you don't put anything else in, your capacity and your ability to clean sewage with septic is going to diminish as these things start to fail, as they start to be compromised over time because they they just don't work.
Oh, as the fields start to fail over time.
As the fields, exactly. So this is it's a finite number. In fact, I I think that graph doesn't go straight up. It doesn't go like this. It goes like this. It starts to fade downward.
You know, I I.
It does. It it does if you don't take care of it, which most people don't adequately take care of it.
Right. Right.
Now, we have rules that you have to have it cleaned every how many years? Three years?
Two to three years.
Two to three years.
Right.
Which would help immensely. Clean the tank out, then you don't have solids overflow the tank into the pipes, which is the primary cause for failure.
Right.
Right. I was I was gonna say that these things do fail, but they fail because maybe they haven't been properly maintained. And when they really fail, isn't it possible to to dig it all up and then put soil in and put a new field in?
Probably. Depends on how.
It's helped upon which, I guess.
Well, it but of course, that's always a fact. But it depends I would from a technical point of view, it depends on how badly the soil that's underneath the soil.
It is contaminated.
Is can is messed up. But you probably can dig deep enough and get down to rock in a lot of places.
Right.
And God bless rock because you have all these fissures and it and all sorts of stuff just sort of goes into the rock.
See, I respect your profession. I I believe that engineering can solve every problem.
Yes, it can. But one of there's no question in my mind about that. But one thing that's a problem is the supply of money is not infinite.
Well, a homeowner is gonna have to deal with what a homeowner deals with.
Yes, that's right.
Anyway, anyway, so.
Anyway, onto transitions.
Yes, back to the topic. Yeah.
So we have another one in Chapel Quah Crossing, right?
Yes, this is the last.
Different kettle of fish.
Correct. And if you recall, the multifamily planned development and the Office Park retail overlay district on this property included very large buffers to surround to center the development on the interior of the site and protect the surrounding residential neighborhoods. So that was part of that legislation, which was a consideration of some elements of transition zoning, the the standard criteria in that zoning overlay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's and that's something that that excellent. Yeah, but we don't want to have a situation where ten years from now, somebody comes in and says, let's rip all these three-story buildings down. And because of the way the transition zoning is written, we can now build six-story buildings.
Maybe you do.
Type of thing. So it's.
Sorry. I'll sidebar on a great book. She had a broth which I'm gonna steal tonight. She doesn't know.
It's okay. We can trade.
We can trade. Because I gave you that one. Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
I gave you one. I did.
So what defines a transition zone for you? So that's really the major point of us all being here for this.
Well, that's okay. So.
So what I what I would.
Bob, what I would what I would suggest to doodling. Bob?
Yes.
What I suggest we need for this meeting or our next meeting is there are some maps that have been presented and each in each map, there is a boundary between a residential zone of some density and another zone, which is a more intensive use.
Yep.
And it's there are I don't know how many different conditions. If you add all up, add up all the independent conditions in each map, there might be ten, there might be twelve. But that would focus the discussion on exactly what it is we're confronted with right now in terms of an industrial district next to a residential district as opposed to a commercial district next to a a residential district.
Yep.
I think we need that matrix to work from in order to have a discussion which actually gets to to actually the transition zoning itself.
Yep.
What defines a transition zone for you? I don't know. We're not the experts, right? So I think we have opinions about the these things and I I have a little bit of experience about this stuff, but it seems to me that we need some professional advice on this. And what would be, for example, in a transition, just to pick one, transitioned zone between uh a commercial district and a and a single family residential district? What are the attributes of that transitioned site parcel uh that is in between those two? What are the attributes of the commercial property, right, which abuts the residential? What are the zoning attributes that we attach to that particular site as a transition zone that mitigate its condition the the conditions of a commercial site next to a residential site? And correspondingly, is there something about that residential property that could be done as well? That's where the meat of this discussion is.
And I think also that as you look at the maps, you're gonna have different conditions where you have these different zones come together. So for example, I think in the Millwood, I I think that large that map of Millwood, isn't that large uh areas like Getney?
That big chunk of land?
I wanna, yes.
Yeah, so that's Getney. So what does that mean? Well, that's a park. That's a public park. So how does that?
Right.
It could be included as a buffer.
Exactly. How's that interface? And how do we interface the industrial zone with that, you know?
Each one of the the say, you know, this the multifamily could be seen as a buffer.
Exactly. And we have in in Chapel Quah, you have that industrial zone on the other side that comes up directly against the you know, one acre zoning in in a steep slope configuration.
Right. So the 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 different colors, take the yellow as the field and the 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 warm colors and the the other colors. As sort of the imposition on the field, every time you have one of these colors adjacent to a yellow, you have a condition, a specific condition, right? And in this one, there might be, I don't know, five or six different conditions. But each one of those would be potentially have a different set of transition zone criteria attached to the parcels that are along that line. And that's where the focus of discussion, I think, needs to go. So we understand exactly what we're dealing with here in terms of what are the potential impositions of a higher use.
Yep.
Against a residential use. And how do we mitigate for that? I mean, these maps are great as a start, but it seems to me we need to we need to really understand what we're dealing with by digging into these zones, finding out what applies to each one of these zones and comparing that to the residential zones that that they abut. And then have a conversation about about what we do about it. And we can have a conversation about what are the various techniques that can be used, right? Like setbacks, buffers. What's a buffer really? Is it just a green space or is it is it a a greater distance which has trees in it? Uh is it a buffer that not only talks about what's in it, but what's not in the buffer? Uh height, relationships, lighting, all those other things. I think that we probably need a sort of a master punch list of all of the attributes that could be applied, should be applied, in looking at the more intensive zone and what it allows and looking at ways in which what might be appropriate to mitigate for those for those parcels.
Right.
So you're saying uses and setbacks. I'm wondering what what are the uses allowed in a VR zone?
Well, what are the uses allowed? What are the setbacks? What are what is that setback? What can it contain?
Which would create the condition between that and the residential zone and where where are the buildings?
I mean, and for example, in a residential zone in our quarter acre, you may have a ten-foot setback surrounding the property. If that property is abutting a commercial zone, the commercial property has a choice of either a zero lot setback, a fence or ten foot where it can.
Right.
Those are that's what the zoning allows. I mean, we regulate the the specific properties through the zoning code based on the uses that are allowed.
Right.
You know, so you will see in every every residential zone, you will see the appropriate setback for their built environment. Unless it's a non-conforming use or they have received variances and most often there's variances for sheds. So you know, we did a rendition of this with the building footprints on them with the zoning lines. So so in in the in the industrial, general industrial, you have more setback requirements to adjacent properties, period, whether it's industrial or residential. So what I'm hearing is you want to know what those setbacks are in relation to a map in relation to where the built environment currently is.
As well as I think um what that what the potential uses are too.
Correct.
A description of what those could be. Now, we you know, we've had some experience with some of the arcane zoning. And for example, you know, when the firehouse was before us with the last applicant, uh you know, there was kind of a what was contested was that there was a stretched interpretation of what that use was going to be to make it comport with the zoning.
Correct.
And then we found out that all this was from I found out later on that this all had its roots from the eighteen hundreds. Some silversmith in Chapel Quah and had just two people working there. They didn't want it to spread. And so that's how our code got brought over to Millwood to to have these limitations of five employees.
Yes.
For that kind of use. So they talk about arcane. It's just it's crazy.
Correct. Correct.
Should have had the silversmith work right in the mine.
Underground.
Underground.
And so what I what I would want to know, what I would want to know from the board is if you want this type of analysis for each of the three areas that we identified, if you are more interested in one over another, kind of give some framework to your request.
Well, well, let me answer that. What what do you think we're here to do? What do you think?
I wasn't sure. I was told you wanted a discussion on transition.
No, no, not I'm sorry, forgive me. What do you think is the intended outcome of this initiative?
I would believe it's recommendation to either change zoning or create new zoning regulations.
To be specific about zoning, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's not just picking one area. It's picking the conditions of in each area. And so that we can actually get to the point of putting together our recommendations for those conditions. It's not a theoretical exercise. This is a this is a we're going to be recommending, I think, zoning legislation to the town board, I believe.
I mean, these are these are the areas that the the current code like transition zoning reflects. These are the three areas that it reflects.
Right.
Fair enough.
That's why these are the three areas that we're showing in.
No, I understand that. And it's important to have that so we can see where the where the conditions exist.
Yeah, yeah. So. Yeah, we didn't pick these. These are just the three where it currently pertains to.
But. No, it's the right place to start.
So and and beyond that, you know.
So it's so there's there's six colors there on other than yellow, I believe. So theoretically, we would have maybe six different classifications of transition zones in Millwood.
So there there are three different zones. There's residential, which is yellow. There's uh red is commercial. It's shades of red.
Right, okay, okay.
And then the yeah, the the purple is industrial. Those are the only three zoning.
So the criteria will be subtly different for each.
Correct.
Like dramatically different.
Right, yeah.
It could.
Yeah, I yeah, so we don't know. So that's why I was saying there's.
And we just don't know. Maybe six, maybe ten, maybe twelve. We have no information.
Right. So I think we just need a place to start.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were gonna get.
Okay.
Maybe this maybe this helps a lot. It helps me anyway. But you know, in thinking about this, I have three major categories. We have basic features of the conflicting zones. That's area, it's a footprint, it's a height, it's setback, it's distance from the next zone. And to a certain extent, it's all there's also maybe even a time factor in there. Because I I'd hate to have a transition zone set up and it it transi- it transitions and then they want to say, oh, let's have another transition zone. But the other pieces might help that. The second thing is what I've bundled together is aesthetics, which would be getting enough light into the buildings, having no lighting spillage, noise considerations, view shed. I'm sure we could add more on all of these. And then the third one, which is to me the most important, is the impact on resources, fundamental resources. And as we've discussed, I believe sewage is is the is the key one. But you have to consider uh the water, the electricity, the parking and the roads to varying degrees. And so if we had words or thoughts that could say, alright, we want transition zones to be you know, as we've said in the in the comp plan, adjacent to the existing um you know, hamlets. And and only there are only two hamlets in the in the plan, right? Because Chapel Crossing is.
Mm-hmm. Not a hamlet.
It's a whatever uh type of thing. And so to me, it's well, how much distance should there be? And is that something that we want to hold the distance for a long time? You know, and not have another zone grow and and because or do we rely on something else in this package of of rules and considerations which looks at the impacts on resources to for the built environment and also considers aesthetic resources, which gets into the buffer zones, the sunlight.
Right, so you're taking this to, I think, a level that I'm not there yet. It sounds as though you're talking about creating a a separate zone itself, right? Like a buffer zone that would let me finish, that you would impose between two different zones as a transition transition zone. The language, the way I understand where I am on this, my understanding of it, and that could that could be a perfectly reasonable device. Uh where I understand this, from my experience, this works is. Uh, where I understand this, from my experience, this works, is when we talk about transition zoning, we're not talking about necessarily creating a special zone. We're talking about within the zoning code on specific sites, right, that border these two, that on those specific sites, there are special zoning provisions that apply to those, rather than creating a whole new zone.
Well, that's better.
Sort of, how do you create a more harmonious relationship
Between the two.
between the two zones, between the abutting zones? Where you have a more intensive use or a more restricted use and a less restricted use, so how do you create a harmonious relationship?
And I prefer not to have fixed zones.
Yep.
But, you know, maybe there's like an overlay, which is not a fixed zone, but it's an overlay where you could have that.
No, that's mine.
Oh, it's in here somewhere. Where?
Well, what, what you're all describing is, is in one of the zoning codes that I, that I previewed for you guys. It, within, say, a hundred feet of a residential zone, if it's a commercial zone, you know, there are these certain things that apply design guidelines, there's, you know, there has to be a, an increased setback away from, you know, that other, that residential zone to a more intensive use, you know, you see what I'm saying?
Well, you have it.
Or uses within these parcels are, you know, they're, you can only use, you know.
So within, within the zoning code right now, you have characteristics of this. And the question is whether or not you feel the existing language is appropriate. You know, let's use ninety-one Bedford, okay? They had a choice to build to the lot line and provide a fence, or they could do a ten-foot. It was unclear, it still is unclear in the code, is it ten feet from the building, or is it ten feet from the parking lot? Okay, the code doesn't go that far. Is that ten feet enough on that site in relation to the neighborhood? Do we get rid of the build to the property line and add a fence? Do you ever think that's kind of what you would be changing?
No, we, we, I, I think we understand that, I really think we understand that. It's a, it's a hypothetical, we need to get to the real pretty quickly here, or we're gonna be, I mean, it's not like we're under a time, a time pressure, but I'd actually like to have something come out sooner rather than later. So I, I would suggest that, I mean, we could talk about a particular example if we like, that we recently have had to deal with, and whether we've been, been successful in doing that, had the tools to do that. But I would really prefer that we, that we really focus on that master list of where these, these different zones collide, have the information about what zoning allows in those two sides, on, on both sides of that line, and then look at a list of tools that are available to us to deal with how we might mitigate that. And this is not, I mean, this is, I had a copy of this from a long time ago, and I lost it, but, so I had to get a new one, and then Sheila stole it from me.
But I've ordered, I've ordered one of my own, but this is, it's a fascinating book, it was put together in nineteen thirty-three.
Nineteen thirty-three. This is not new stuff, you know, I mean, it's, it's pretty much all in here, right?
I'm serious.
I mean, it's all.
What's the name of the book, Tom?
Name of the book is Harvard City Planning Studies, Volume Transitional Zoning, and the author is Arthur C. Comey, I'm sure he's passed, left us, because this is nineteen thirty-three. But it's a serious piece of scholarship here, and it's, almost all the tools are in here, it's already, we just need to get at it.
The, the tools are in there, and what's interesting is that many of the tools that are in here and have their nineteen thirty-three names are incorporated into form-based code with new names, you know, but, but many of the tools are exactly the same. Where you have building offsets, where the higher the building goes, the narrower it gets, you, you cut the profile.
Right, right.
Where you have, um, when you're, let's say you're abutting a residential to a, they didn't have mixed-use zones, or they didn't call them that then, but let's say we're talking about mixed-use, uh, where you've got the residential and the mixed-use, you know, you have a lower roofline, uh, abutting that district. You know, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the tools are there, where you have a deeper setback on the sidewalk for the
Right.
uh, the less restrictive use, the commercial use, so that it doesn't overpower the residential uses that sit so close to it.
And, and these are, again, getting back to your point, to make it more harmonious, but they're also elastic tools
Yes.
in that they're not just one-dimensional, we just say it has to be a hundred feet. It, it, there's all these different things coming in.
It's a discretionary application.
Right.
Well, that's the number one, that's the number one issue that we have right now, is the inflexible zoning
Right.
that exists within the commercial areas.
So, so, you know, we can get at that. So here's what you were talking about, I mean, what's actually in, right, the buffers on three.
Yep, exactly.
This is another document, um, lateral with the buffer area, how big, how wide is it? What are the types of uses permitted in the buffer area? What are standards with respect to, um, what you expect the buffer area to do for you, right? What's the outcome of it? Uh, function, yard pattern, intervening streets as a, as a device to create a buffer, a street between two zones. Um, intense statements. The, the material is, it's available to us, and it's been around. I just think we need it in front of us in an organized way, so that we can have a, a meaningful conversation about this.
And then look at the actual particulars that we have in our, our conditions in our town.
Exactly, exactly.
Yep, makes sense. I think, um, my own personal view is that, um, the third unknown hamlet, you know, Chapua Crossing, I, I think that was really well addressed, and I, I don't think there's much meat there. I mean, the town board, planning board have been through that for, what, ten years, twelve years, whatever it is. Seems to me that that's pretty well set at this point. But what is not set, of course, is the, the two hamlets. And those are the two areas I think that really could, could use this kind of study. That's where the, we, we think the future development's gonna come from. So we could, you know, one thing was, you know, we could actually look at a specific piece and really take, uh, maybe, for example, on the Chapua area, you know, take a look at a specific area um, and, and see what it looks like. You know, I don't know what's, uh, you know, we have a ball field, we have, uh, you know, parking lots, we have the community areas. But maybe take a look at, you know, an area like this, which is kind of in flux, and, and, you know, see what this looks like in some detail, see how that works against this transition up here. We, we just did ninety-one Bedford, so we, that's up here, right? Yeah, up here in this area. So maybe we could take a look at something like that, a specific area, and, and look at something that makes some sense. To start, does that make sense, to look at a piece like that and, and see, you know, really drill down and look and see what, what we see in something like that?
You know, I think that's actually an idea.
So you make a case study and then see whether you can extrapolate.
A case study to really understand broadly what the issues are.
Right.
And then come back and apply them to the rest.
Yeah, because then I think we're gonna cull from that the information that could be very important. And what we could actually do is maybe just drill down on one and say, look at this, look what we discovered here as we go through this exercise, to see the conditions, the problems, the constraints, all the issues that we come up with, and anticipate the sorts of kind, the, the, the issues that, you know, um, we've seen before, and we can anticipate in the future. I mean, I just don't, you know, I don't, there's just not a whole lot going on right now in the industrial area, the school buses and all that area are, I don't know what's going on down here, this is really a town board area down with a parking lot and memorial field and whatever's happening down here, or not happening down here.
The question about memorial field, is that the ball field's down there?
Did I misname it?
Well, whatever, whatever.
The ball field, right field.
I do have a question about that. If the town were, were to redevelop that more intensively, would there be another place to locate the ball fields in Newcastle?
I would assume so.
I, yeah. I have to do is, part, one of the things we talked about when we were doing the revitalization is if you took the, I gotta get my bearings down, right, there's a, back over there. Back over there, take that old, take that commuter parking lot, convert that back into ball fields, take these ball fields and develop them, and then do a structure.
Who's gonna pay for the structure?
The developer that comes in and gets all this land to develop.
Yeah, you know, okay, so a parking garage for an acre, four million bucks.
A parking garage, depending on where you're building, it goes from fifteen to seventy thousand dollars a stall.
I know that, at a big thirty.
Okay.
Four million bucks.
Okay.
Land, I don't believe that land in this town, anywhere in this town is worth four million bucks an acre. I just don't, doesn't make sense to me.
I, I don't know, it all depends. If it's got infrastructure, you could, you could walk to the train station, somebody could, and if you could get, and if you could get forty units on it,
What density are you gonna put on there?
People would say, okay, yeah, I'd pay that for it.
Here's the thing, if you would like to come in and come up with a matrix of the requirements of the zoning, then we could, we could talk about, we can do that.
No, they wouldn't. It's a premium of, it's a premium, it's a premium of like eighty thousand dollars per unit, why build there, when you could build. I'm told by this, build this whole development on, what's the name of it? They don't have to build here at that kind of premium.
No, they're just saying, you know, what you would do.
You didn't say that.
So we're happy to provide you an analysis of each of the zoning districts and what the current code said
Financially, it wouldn't pass well.
I don't know.
Well.
I, I don't, I don't know.
In relation to these, their, their surroundings.
Yep, and I think the other issue is that, um, I think even between the so-called industrial and, and business zones, even that, um, uh, where they come together, we should be looking at those as well.
Absolutely, I, I think, I think.
Just look at all of them, right, all of them.
Yeah, no, it is all the zoning.
All those, uh, you know, those areas.
Yeah.
Alright, but it's, you know, but then it's.
It has to be, does it have to be? You know, if we say this is a business zone here, alright, so then something adjacent to that works. But if it's over here on this property, it doesn't work, right?
How can you say that?
I think that's where the flexibility comes in, I think in any standard.
How, how can you say that? I mean, right now, based, based on the comprehensive plan and the public outreach discussions, there have been suggested zoning changes in, in this entire area. So, so that line of what surrounds the hamlet, you know, those are all of the areas that people wanna discuss as far as future change of development pattern, if you will.
And how far from those, that line? Can we just say no?
Sabrina, I'm sorry, what line are you talking about? Where are we?
The hamlet boundary.
She's saying that, well, gee, the transition zone.
The black line is the hamlet boundary defined by what kind of a.
Census.
Census designated place.
Census.
That doesn't necessarily make it, that's a census designation, it's not necessarily a, an urban fabric.
No, 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 it's, no, it's not, but the main, the main street, the, the, the Greeley, the Greeley of King Street.
A convenient device.
Is, is the main commercial area right now. There have been discussions in here about higher density use.
Who?
Private property owners coming in wanting to do something, higher density, yes.
Are they assembling property to do it? Yeah, they would go taller.
So there have been discussions down here on Town Hall and surrounding Town Hall. There have been discussions over, we, we, we lived through a discussion over here. There has been, have been developers coming in of people who own these single-family homes and the future for their properties here. These properties over here, there has been requests to change use and, and to change codes to allow more flexibility along King Street. This is what we're seeing in my office.
Right, we've had, we've had a couple applications that have come.
How can I do this? Correct.
Some have died.
I have had pre-application meetings with many property owners that own a property that may have a principal use and an accessory building. They wanna do something more with the accessory building. Our zoning code does not allow what they wanna do. So when, when I tell you that there, the, the development community is looking for flexibility, they're looking to be able to do higher intensity development, not necessarily higher stories, but what is more intense than what is there today in the sense of use that is allowable by the zoning code, but figuratively speaking, they cannot do it on the land.
So I am, I am guessing that every town, every city gets those same people coming in and having the same conversation. We have developers coming in, it's, you know, wanting to do more that actually fits on the site, happens all the time. And that's actually a matter of right sometimes, but they get pushed back because of our other provisions that apply to a project where wetlands and so on and so forth, they get pushed back, reasonably so. So this is not something, I mean, this is, this is something that happens everywhere all the time. Property owners coming in, developers coming in, saying, well, what more can I do than what's allowed? Because right now, I can only realize, I cannot, I can't get any extra value out of this property because I'm restricted by zoning. So I wanna get more value out of the property, how can I get around, or is there any leeway or gift, right? The zone is a zone, unless we're gonna rezone, I don't think that flexibility is necessarily an objective of the responsibility of the, of our, our planning initiatives.
Well, certainly, uh, probably outside of what we're talking about tonight, which is the transition zones.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, transition zones are probably going to be on the outskirts of this, but it may inform us in terms of what, I mean, I.
Well, this is, this is a big, big question, do you want us to do the R-half acre versus the R-acre? And what the difference in setbacks and criteria are between those two residential zones?
Well, let me ask you something, do you think we should do it?
No, I do not, but Bob raised the question.
Okay.
And so I'm trying to carry through a conversation, so I do not think that, that we should trip on this, right now.
I don't thi- I wouldn't trip on lower, one gradation of residential to another.
Right, I think that this.
I think that that solves itself in, in the codes we have.
This, this.
It's the, it's the bright colors against the yellow.
It's the colors, correct.
And some of the bright colors against each other.
And potentially, and, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I agree.
I agree with that.
I don't, I don't think we should spend time on the different yellows.
Okay.
We may find in, in certain cases here that what we have in the code right now is adequate, we don't have to worry about it, but we won't know until we have the information in front of us.
Yeah, and I wouldn't ignore Chapua Crossing. I wouldn't wanna study it more, but there's so much that we have studied, that should be captured and look at it like, we don't want, you know, the, in the multi-family.
For the Chapua Crossing.
Yeah, the multifamily zone, you know, we have height restrictions, and we have other restriction on this piece of property here, so what have we captured there? We're not happy with, uh, you know, the, the houses were proposed recently with a thirty-foot or twenty-foot drop to the next plateau.
Correct, and so, so I would rather not dive into this.
Not dive into it as to protect it, but to cherry pick information.
But, no. Yeah, I, I think that this is dangerous territory right now, based on what you're talking about. If you wanna talk about this to this, or this to this, we can do that as well.
Wait, 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 that's right.
No, I'm just trying to get criteria.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what do you mean dangerous territory? What we're looking for, let me just finish. Well, I think what we're looking for is understanding the, the collision of two different zones. I don't care where they are in town, we're talking about just like this, the two different zones colliding, and what are the mitigating factors that maybe should be in place to solve that problem? Doesn't necessarily say that we're gonna jump into Chapua Crossing and start to apply, uh, these zoning restrictions. It's just a, it's just a starting point to understand the different conditions we have. I don't think that we should, that anybody should feel that we're yet getting to the point where we're impinging on anybody's property rights.
That was not my intention.
Okay, so why is it a dangerous thing?
At all, I just, because, because this, this is different in its physical layout and the zoning that was placed upon this, the overlay protection, the retail overlay, and the different boundary descriptions and the protections that were worked into the zoning code to protect the residential area, which you physically cannot accommodate in Chapua or Millwood. That's the only difference, is that the prescriptions for this site have such a great buffer distance surrounding the actual physical use of that property in relation to a single-family lot, that it, that you could not employ these distances and still maintain a commercial area in Chapua.
Well, that's a consequence of it being large site development and a PDCP process that actually puts some of these things in place as hard laws.
Yep, this was specifically codified.
Got it, got it.
Correct, so.
But that doesn't mean, but, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be looking at if we have this condition somewhere else.
The list.
That it was.
The, the, the BRO twenty against EMFPE.
This is the only BRO twenty that is.
The moment, okay.
There, there is nobody.
But, but the next point, but the next point was you called the important and useful parts of this that we've learned from this ordeal experience, ten, twelve-year experience, so don't ignore it, which I think is a good point, and, and learn from it.
Absolutely.
I don't think we, we get involved with trying to change it, I think it's been done, and I think it's been done as well as it can be done, and it just, just doesn't apply to the other hamlets.
As well as we could do it, maybe could've done better.
Well. Well, whatever, whatever, okay.
Fair enough.
But I think, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, we can, we can look at those characteristics, I know them actually pretty well.
More characteristics and strategy, strategies, and we, we employed a lot of them, we, we opposed a lot of them
Yeah.
We all know. Yeah, we all know.
pursuant to the town board legislation. So I think we know it pretty well, but I think the next point is really well taken, that, you know, learn from the good things that we did do, rather than relearning.
So what, so the next step is for us to provide you with that detail of what you currently have in the codes in the different districts.
Yeah.
And, and try and.
Yeah, and the collision districts.
Yeah, I like that, where zoning.
It's available on Amazon.
Collides, and, uh, I still have one issue, is how do you prevent, um, this kind of transition planning four hundred and fifty feet outside of the hamlet line and a whole bunch of residential properties? So that's another issue we can save for a later time, but, but I think gathering the factors and, and that are important, the basics, the aesthetics, and the impact on resources, which I think is the most important. Yeah, that's, that's what I. Yeah, that's, that's what I think we need to have, and then we can use the hamlet of Chapacua to now try and see how we would wanna change the zoning, would we wanna repeat certain things in a particular discussion on tr- transition zoning,
Yep.
so that all the factors are there, as opposed to there, there, and there. And um, you know, and then say, well, okay, this is the way we wanna go forward with this.
And I think we could, we could again, once we get the matrix, we can also study an area and just, you know, build it out and test it and see what it looks like. See what those conflicts might be and what they look like, and maybe we can again, as we do Chapacua Crossing, learn from that and pull it on to the next, the next area.
Yeah, it's interesting, not only Chapacua Crossing, but ninety-one Bedford Road, I mean, we just had that.
I think that's the best one to do the study on, it's all fresh in our heads.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, we, we might find some great things to change there.
No, but it's.
Or re-study.
We might find a building power for tomorrow.
We could fix that.
And you know, and that applicant is a good example about, I think, what we're trying to protect, because that, that applicant's application stirred up a lot of emotions with the neighbors, and I think that's what's partially triggering this transition.
It's a good case study.
It's a good case study, because it had good people all over the place, working on the applicant and the board and and many of the, of the neighbors.
I think it's a perfect case study, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but I think. I think Sabrina's point about Chapacua Crossing is that it's so unique, and there will be lessons that we can draw from it, but we're probably not gonna see another property like that, we'll be able, but ninety-one Bedford Road will probably give us some conditions
Right.
that will be replicated in other applications, and so it might be the more valuable study point.
We might see another ten levels in the next ten years.
Yeah.
So, so let us provide for you the details of the characteristics within each of the zoning districts that are in the 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 collision districts.
Yep.
We can, from that meeting, then decide if you wanna hone in on a specific property or a specific area, or, you know, we can take it from there.
Well, I, I think we just decided we're gonna hone in on ninety-one Bedford Road, and just because we know it so well. And that's a collision of which two zones, the R one A?
B R, B R and.
And R.
B R and.
B R and one or one.
And it's ours.
Or in half acre.
Half acre.
Okay, so, we are, we, I mean, that's a, that's sort of a, a, a quick one, because we know, we all know so much about it. We can look at that again and look at the tools that we would have liked to apply. If we have the list of tools in front of us, and if they're giving to, given to us as a list, what we would have liked to apply to that, and how would that make that better, just as the, a test case?
Yeah, I agree.
A theoretical test case based on a real uh project.
Okay, so I'm done, Harry?
And that's probably a likely scenario that's gonna happen again and again and again, more than some other.
Yes, more times.
But, for that project, yeah, did we, did we adopt the resolution?
You adopted the resolution.
We did, this was just the amendment to the resolution, okay.
So, so, do you, you want the collision of all districts and a focus on the B R district to the R half acre district?
Yeah, because it's, you know, it's, it's gonna be, as Greg said, what, most likely, uh gonna be the ones we see coming to us.
The one, the one B R, B R P against the R half acre and R quarter acre.
The others are tougher.
R, one quarter, I see, also, yeah.
Yep, those are, those are your comments.
And Sabrina, what you also said from, you had said people are coming in and asking, is this the district that's connected? That's, that's the middle king, right? That's, that's middle king, the churches are all right here and stuff like that?
That's residential right now, yes. Yep.
Yeah. I could see those, I could see those grow towards each other someday.
Those would be zoning, if they wanna do something more intensive, those would be zoning changes altogether, not really transitions.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, that'd be so.
Correct.
I wouldn't encourage growth.
Correct, yeah.
No, I, I wouldn't either, I like the, I like the break between the two of them, I'm just saying I could see people wanting to grow those business districts.
That'd be a mistake. What you wanna do is you wanna concentrate in the center of the hamlet if you can, rather than sticking out, reaching out.
And it's like a hill too, it's a tough hill.
Yeah, it's really difficult.
I like it with the churches in there.
Yeah.
It's a nice break, that's a nice transition zone, actually, between those two things.
So, we should, you're suggesting more religious institutions to be a stall walk in our buffer zone? Because we can tell, you know, people what we want in the buffer zone.
I'm not talking about religion.
You're so literal.
I'm an engineer.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple thoughts I would love to share.
Sure.
Yeah.
An opportunity, and it includes showing a couple pictures, if I can plug a um.
Sure.
Flash drive in the computer, and if it comes up there, I don't know, will that work?
Sound your name first.
Say it, tell him.
William Spade, partners with Caco State.
I bet he remembers that, isn't he?
Now, um, so what, we've obviously spent a lot of time thinking about the, the hamlet area, particularly Chapacua Hamlet in terms of um the commercial district, and uh particularly the opportunity to create a more diverse set of housing options here. I, you know, for us, particularly, the, the whole discussion of affordable housing highlighted the, the extreme lack of diversity that we have as a community for housing types, which leads to, I think, a lack of diversity generally in the community. And um so if, if there's an opportunity to create more housing diversity, I think it'll, it'll help lead to a more diverse community, and I think that's the place where you're possibly gonna have a wonderful effect on the, on the community, considering this is, uh as a community goal, how can we create a greater diversity here?
So, this is not really specifically the transition zone, what you're, you're talking about?
It's exactly the transition zone, so I'll, I'll show you what I'm, what I'm thinking, but uh.
Okay.
In terms of uh focusing on, you know, that, that the hamlet district has very tiny little areas of business zone, and that's where, as with ninety-one Bedford, we're able to do multifamily housing. Otherwise, outside of that, it's quarter acre, half acre, single-family housing, right? And so you, you have very limited selection of non-single-family housing options here, right? All the multifamily uh properties are built out, right? A developer who wants to do multifamily housing at the moment of any kind can't walk in here and bid on some piece of property that's zoned for that already, they have to, their only option is to look at the business zone properties at the moment to do, exit, you know, sort of the same thing we've, we've done with ninety-one Bedford. So, what, uh, I just wanted to identify a couple of things, and going by the pictures helps, it's my best option here, I did this one.
Well, you can click in to where you are, if it's all in one.
I think I did the wrong thing there, I don't go backwards.
Up top, there's an arrow, on the upper left-hand corner.
Up top, see that arrow?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, click on that arrow.
Okay.
It'll go back.
Somewhere.
You didn't, you didn't hit it.
The pad seems sensitive.
Oh, you missed it.
You missed it.
Let us show you where it is.
It's there.
She went with the green.
Tracking pads. Come here.
Double click it.
Okay.
All right, now will it, can I get it to show all the pictures that I, should I highlight the whole thing, or just?
Are we gonna look at all those pictures?
I don't know.
Get a lot of kilobytes.
Are we gonna look at all those pictures?
Uh, the idea was to go through it quickly, sorry, and that didn't work.
I'll just try to click on one of them, see if it opens for you.
I just tried. Sorry, I knew, you know, I tried to, I wondered if I get into that same. This is a different file.
So, go back.
Our folder.
Close out of the X, up top, the red one.
The red one?
The red one.
Sorry. Oh, what?
Go down on the bottom. The folder, yeah, close your folder on one.
Down here? That's duplicated, there's a bunch of duplicated things here.
Oh, yeah, go down halfway down.
Go down to the files, those four kilobytes, you won't be able to open.
Yeah, see where, no, go down and down.
Where?
To the right.
Where you see ones, right near it.
Yeah, go ahead. No, no, uh, it was, it says PB transition zone. Yeah, PB transition zoning.
Right there.
And then scroll down.
And now go down, right there.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
There you go.
All right, so this you've seen, right, it's.
Right.
The, the, the essence of the discussion, for in my mind, is the Chapacua Hamlet and how we have the opportunity to create more diversity of housing. Uh, to me, the issue is the business zone where right now you can only do multifamily is this essentially hundred-foot wide strip along King Street, and right behind it is quarter acre zoning. And um some concern I would say I would have is that if you're talking about.
I'm sorry, the hundred, could you, which, you're talking about that pink that's going uphill?
So. Here, you know, maybe I've got this, I got, oh.
Here, use the green one.
Right there, right, got it, okay, go ahead.
Right, right, so that's a hundred feet deep.
Got it.
And that, even that hundred-foot line, as you can see on some of the properties, and a couple of these we've looked at, uh, you know, train, the, the, the uh buffer bisects the part of the property, right?
Right.
So, a portion of the property is in the B R zone, another portion is in the quarter acre zone. And so, um, that obviously creates tremendous conflict for being able to try to decide what you can even do with that, that piece of property. Um, my point was gonna be, I, I, I would like to see, instead of focusing on how to be restrictive on the B R zone, as we had some of that kind of conversation with ninety-one Bedford, right? We were looking at what can we do on, on the ninety-one Bedford lot to kind of uh prevent negative impacts on the quarter acre, half acre zoning beyond it? And, and, and yet, my thinking being in terms of transition zone, given that the B R zone is the only place where we can create any kind of alternative housing, look at the, the zoning, the, the zoning districts beyond it, how can?
So, wait a minute, I'm sorry, just sort of understand what you're saying, so instead of looking at mitigating measures in the B R zone?
Correct.
You're looking for measures in the adjacent lower-density residential zone?
Correct.
To allow full development of the B Rs, fuller, complete development, as bright development of the B R zone?
Complete development of the B R zone, correct.
It actually sounds like you're act, you're asking for greater density, you put into the half acre and one acre zones that surround the B R zone. You wanna build out instead of protecting.
Correct.
Do you wanna change?
Correct.
You wanna build out that density.
Yeah, do you wanna change the zoning in the adjacent?
As you talked about overlay, or maybe it's even creating a, a separate zone.
I think that's interesting proposition, but I'm not sure that's in the wheelhouse what we're doing here.
I understand.
I mean, that's a whole different subject.
So, let me show you an example, which is the next slide, um, and then, how do I go to the next?
Hit the X.
Hit the X, no, not the red X, not the red X, over there, hit the X.
Yes.
On, on the.
The one that says Chapacua, up top, high.
Up above.
Yeah.
There you go.
The add X, right there.
Sorry.
I can't hold it steady that long.
Surgical, pursuing too far.
Down to your folder, no, no, down to your folder.
Down here?
Yeah, the circle, the can, hey.
It's to the left, to the left, to the left, to the left, the folder.
All the way to the left.
The folder, yeah.
Right there.
Well, you click on the folder, all your files should come up, and just stay below the one.
Oh.
Down. Yeah, you gotta stay down.
Double click it.
So, what I'm trying to show, uh, this goes down.
Uh, Greenwich, right?
Greenwich, so in Greenwich, and I've got a couple of images after this, the, try to replicate it with the, the similar colors as we have. Pink is commercial zoning, uh, yellow is residential zoning. They have the zone R six, which is a residential zone, uh, that allows one and two-family housing, as well as three or more units if you meet certain conditions.
But, Bill, I, I, I'm sorry to come back to this.
Go ahead.
And if, if folks wanna stay for this presentation, that's fine. But we are not charged here, and we have not asked for permission, not permission, we haven't notified the Town Board that one of the things we're gonna do here is create new zones.
Yeah, I understand.
That's not what we're doing. What we're doing is we're working within existing zoning to create uh mitigating requirements within existing zones to solve the problem of colliding zones. We're not talking about taking an R two zone and turning it into some new R six zone. That's not what we're charged to do here, and I, it, it, that's a really big subject, and I, I'm not sure that if we were to tell the Town Board that's what we were going to do, they might have a different opinion about whether we should be doing that or not.
I might, I was thinking that it could be additional conditions related to quarter acre zoning that's abutting the B R zone, and thinking of, all right, how can, uh, and again, it's, the, the notion of the opportunity being creating more diverse housing, uh, than just focusing on uh how to further restrict the B R zone lots, given that they're right next to quarter acre, that expansive idea.
What you're talking about doing is taking a quarter acre area, for example.
Right.
And people who have invested in that as their neighborhood, and their investment in the town, which is a significant thing that people do, and it's not just money, right, it's where they raise their families, it's the neighborhoods they love, so on and so forth. And suggesting that for the benefit of a, of a more intensive use, that we ought to essentially change their zoning in order to allow that use to happen. And I think we had that discussion, long discussion about that with, with respect to putting multifamily in some of our residential, existing residential neighborhoods. Now, I know you're saying it, well, you're only gonna do it adjacent to a business zone, for example, but that, that doesn't change the fact that we're going, that we would be going into these neighborhoods and changing the neighborhoods. I thought that the purpose was to protect the neighborhoods.
Right, just the, just the opposite, rather than have further impositions on those neighborhoods, just to.
Which is, well, which is not.
Give them more protections.
Right, which is, and, and if there's, if there, if there's, uh, if there's a desire, a need to get more multifamily housing, I suggest to you that there is, there are business zones, there's land in our existing zones that would allow that, which is severely underutilized.
Yeah, I agree.
And that could, it could happen there.
I agree.
So.
And there are reasons it's not happening.
Uh, yeah, but.
The, the, which is, I believe, related to what you're trying to address. So, understanding why, you know, the opportunities exist in any of those B R zone lots, why do people not choose that? Why aren't, why isn't that investment happening? Uh, in part, it's due to the, due to the restrictive zoning, in part, at the moment, it's due to commercial requirement on the ground floor, which you all have talked about.
So, that's a different subject, though, then now we're talking, we're, now we're talking about the conditions that apply to the business zone. We're not talking about going into the, an adjacent residential zone and increasing the density there.
Right.
Okay, so that's a different conversation.
Right.
I think there's one more issue in the downtown, besides zoning, is consolidation of properties. There's lots of, lots of little properties downtown owned by lots of, lots of different people, and to do a mixed-use development like you guys did on ninety-one, that's harder than downtown, because you have to, you have to gather up four or five different property owners and buy out all their property to do it.
Right.
So, that makes it a little bit tougher too.
Sure, yeah, so, yeah, ninety-one Bedford, it was already a pre-existing eight-tenth of an acre lot, which is, doesn't really exist in the rest of the B R zone. So, overall, I mean, we don't have to look at any other pictures, so I was hoping to show you some examples that Greenwich has done in terms of that zone adjacent to the, to the business zone, where they've created two-family housing, they've created two individual, single-family homes on a small lot, so it is zone change.
That's a clever move, right.
But it's, that's still transition zoning, I, you know, maybe my overall point would be, you, you, there seem to be two different ideas. There's transition zoning, right, which is a zone that deals with the transition between two other zoning, you know, categories. There's buffer, uh, you know, there's buffer zones, and buffer zone could be, you know, what we dealt with on ninety-one Bedford, where it's literally a slice of that piece of property that you're creating a buffer along. I'm hoping that you tackle the bigger topic of transition zone, uh, and also though, thinking about how to create a, a more diverse, you know, giving more opportunity, creating more diverse housing, than to think of the in-town area and trying to restrict and keep it the way it is, right? There's, I appreciate that.
Nobody's trying to keep it the way it is, I, I don't think that that's an accurate representation of what I think the comp plan says. I think that anything we do, I think, would hopefully be in the service, the purpose would be to be in the service of the comp plan. And the comp plan does emphatically not say, keep it the way it is. It says, go ahead and find a way to encourage a transformation of the hamlets, but do it in a managed way that doesn't impact the neighborhoods. And that's what I, that's my quick read on the comp plan.
Okay, yeah, oh, so what, in my mind, we're.
To echo that, I think what, what the issue then really is, is um because there's problems within the B R zoning, we shouldn't move outside of that zone and, and try to cure those problems by going into someone else's zone and saying, we're going to impose these conditions now and you, because we can't resolve them inside here, it's too difficult. Maybe it's better to resolve them inside, and to Tom's point, build out that area and, and resolve the issues that way.
Yeah.
I think that's clearly what it is, because uh. I think that's clearly what it is, because I think the position that we have here is exactly the opposite. And that is, this is about the vulnerability of, of these quarter acre and half acre zones that are colliding with these areas, and what can we do to make, to better protect those folks from the kind of development that we want to see within the BR and the IG, whatever these zones are.
See, I, so I.
But not to spread it.
I just, I disagree with the notion that you're trying to protect those areas because part of dealing with the growth of the community and sort of creating a more vital, to me, creating a more vital downtown is to get more housing in this in-town area.
We don't disagree with that.
Okay, we don't disagree with that.
That's true, but I think what, what you're confusing is what we're trying to do is exactly what with your application, is address some of the concerns of the adjoining property owners that have been living there for two, five, ten years. An application comes in front of them, that's a good application, that has the right to do something, but it's impacting these neighbors, and we're trying to figure out a way to work that in the future, to make that better in the future, so it goes smoother for everybody else. Your, your idea is a, is a different idea. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good idea, it's just a different idea.
Yeah.
It's rezoning is what it is.
It's rezoning, which I don't think we, I, I think the Town Board would not be happy if we threw that out of the playground now.
And I think that discussion was sort of resolved in the whole master plan conversation. That, you know, that while we're looking to add in greater diversity in housing and maybe increase density in appropriate areas, at the same time, we talked a lot about this, maintaining the zoning contract that you have with the town as it's developed over, you know, decades. And the people who have invested in that zoning contract and have lived here for decades.
Okay.
But there were.
Thank you for.
There were two nice, there were two properties that I just wanna mention. There was one that was right about here on Field Point Road.
Yeah.
And that's a neat apartment complex.
Yeah.
Where's Field Point?
Field Point Road is.
Oh, Greenwich.
Oh, in Greenwich.
Maybe, maybe you can't see Greenwich, but Dick does.
God, I have to pass out some of those meds I have.
But doesn't Greenwich not allow multifamily as a right? Don't you have to go through a special permit?
I have no idea.
What is the population of Greenwich as compared to the population of Newcastle?
Newcastle's eighteen thousand, what's Greenwich?
Fifty.
Seventeen, seven, yeah.
But, but, excuse me, but anyway, right there, it was, it's an apartment complex where they, all the, all, like your place, all, in this case, all the parking was underneath.
Yeah.
And to the extent that perhaps for earlier zoning, because this was something that was built over fifty years ago, it, it's, it had a green space on top of the underground parking garage, which set up the building with two things, an area for people to, the kids could play, and a buffer. So it was kinda neat, but it was probably three acres.
Okay.
So it was, it was special in a way. And the other one I wanna mention, Tom, is, you wanted to know where, you wanna know where in Chapacua you could have an acre that was worth.
Four million bucks.
Four million. A long time ago, I had an ancestor that owned an acre, it was granted to him by the Indians, of one acre. He bought it. And I'm just wondering, in Greenwich, what it would be worth now? I just always wondered, why did he sell that?
Problem with it is you would, you would have, you'd have to put a much greater density of development on that acre than anybody would wanna contemplate in Chapacua.
Well, if you go on the other side of the highway, yeah, in Chapacua.
You'd have to just make it a special thing, we got eight square buildings. I don't know what it would be, but it would be more than we would allow.
Good.
But.
It's probably worth a million.
Okay, so we have, there's some good information here, I think, good conversation. And if Kellen and Sabrina can come back with those collision areas and the matrix, I think it'll be really helpful. And we can go forward and look at some of these and use ninety-one Bedford as a, as a test case and see what we do there. Sound good? So we wanna schedule that for the second meeting in March?
I don't know that you can, we've been pretty booked, I wanna, Janice, you wanna pull up the calendar? We cannot do it by the second meeting in March.
Okay. Second show.
So far, we are, we have two on March twenty, uh, three on March twenty.
Three?
Three appointments.
It's up to you, but.
Chapacua Crossing, Happy.
We also, we, we, we need more time, we need more time on that.
You need the time, yes.
We need the time.
Okay, okay.
So April third?
I, I may be out of town on April third.
I will, too.
So, seventeen?
Spring break?
Before the holiday week, week before is the holiday week.
In Eastern.
Eastern's first, right?
Eastern's the first.
So, I suppose probably just before, or the whole.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be out of town, I think.
Okay, well then, you have to do that.
So how about the second meeting in April?
April seventeen.
Yeah, okay.
Greenwich report in two weeks.
Great, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Kellen, for all the maps and preparation. All right?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn? I guess we have to do that.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
One favor?
Twenty-five minutes break.